Good morning, we thank you for your presence. If you will, please stand for our indication, then we'll back to Mr. Typho. Kind heavenly Father, we thank you this morning for thy watch care over us. We realize that in a special way that you have given us the blessing of thy providence, and we pray heavenly Father that you could continue it with us as undeserved creatures as we are. We thank you for this gathering together, help us Lord to honor thee in all that we do. Bless our many varied communities, bless all thy people as each in some special way. These around this table, may you give us wisdom to do those things that are right, good. And this that we ask for these, we ask all that are in places of authority, whatever that authority might be. Heavenly Father, bless those who are sick, bless those who need you in some special way. Continue with us, accept our thanks. We know these are great blessings, but we know that you're a great God of what we fail and asking. We only trust you, Lord, failing great, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
Please, 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 attention, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, please. Again, we reprimanded this morning. First item on our agenda is approved by me from last meeting, gentlemen, I think you have received them. Written format, there's changes that we made. Give thought to your motion, you see, for your second, both second discussion. Means, very glad that you don't say aye, or both states reject. Thank you. First item on our agenda this morning is something very special. And we, as a county, both of recognized this morning, Mr. and Mrs. Luther Towns. They celebrated their seventy-first wedding anniversary just on the Fourth of July. And for all accomplishments that they have, their children here with them today, and other members of the family, but seventy-one years is quite an accomplishment. And to say the least, is very rare in this day and time in which we live. But I'm thankful today to recognize them and as we've talked to them, and as the council and the agent directors and their assistants have said, they have been successful in so many ways. And the reason part of that, I think, Ms. Townsend said, that they trusted in the Lord. And so, that's as good a testimony as we could ask for. And so, today, Mr. and Ms. Townsend, we want to present you with a resolution from our county. And by executive authority, I'm declaring this Luther and Billy Townsend, in Kemp County, Alabama. Now, if you will, please come up here and let us give you this resolution and get your picture. Your children, if you would. And all council and the agency, who in need some time.
Why y'all want to come down here, seven?
Well, let's come up here, if this takes a better, it's alright.
How about y'all sit down and just get your chairs close to the front? Yeah, y'all sit this way.
How are you?
Bless your heart. Gratitude. Everything good?
Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you so very much, God bless you. Thank you, Ms. Luther, God bless you, pray. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
I was married forty-five years last, but I didn't mind sure, lady was, I turned around another forty-five to be ninety. So, anyway, I'm a progressive, anyway. I gave them fresh conditions to leave as they need to do, and that's the reason that they're leaving. Next item on the agenda, school safety. We have Sheriff Weldon and Dr. Barnett with us here this morning. Gentlemen, if y'all would please come to the podium. And the reason that we've asked for this is because of recent events that happened that all of us have seen. And I know all our communities are in some way or another concerned about it. And even though it's not happened with us, it very well could happen to us. And so, we wanted y'all to come and give us just a brief overview of how that you're handling these particular things, and the things that you've done, the SROs. And Dr. Barnett, you would come first, and then we'll turn it to Sheriff Weldon.
Well, I'm honored to be able to speak with you guys today. It's a real treat to speak to you as county commissioner and have Sheriff Weldon here joining me. The county commission, the board of education, and the sheriff's office, over the last few months, have worked so well together to support our students and our faculty, staff, and safety of our student. I'm so honored to be able to work with all these gentlemen and ladies that are in our schools every day, in addition to what they do every day as far as that, just, you know, being a presence in educating, and mentoring, and educating students. They've taken on the SROs, and our eight high schools have taken on a career tech class, where they're allowing them to build relationships with our students. I'm gonna let him speak at that. But as a school district, safety has been a real priority for us. Our schools are old, you all come from various communities, you stay in the different building, we have multiple buildings, multiple entryways. One of the things we've tried to do over the last couple of years is really secure our friend group, where we funnel all visitors to a centralized location, which is usually a one or two locations on our campus, a high school or an elementary. Much like you have a best of you, when you come in, the county commission, you have a best of you that enters your lock, and you have someone there that greets you, welcomes you, determines where you need to go. We have been in the construction process of building those at each one of our high schools as well. And so, that will be completed in probably the next six weeks. We try to get them this summer, but they're just, the summers are too short for us to get that at all of our high schools. So, that's something that we're doing also. Our main badge has been swipe cards, key cards, so you won't pay, you'll have to have credentials to gain access to where you need to go. That's just a few things we've done in addition to, it's the SROs. The SRO joint project between the commission and the board of education alongside the sheriff's office is part of one of the greatest investments that we've made. And the dogs that we now have that allow us to, you know, run our halls and scan for any kind of drugs or any kind of things that may be needed, that that's a great deterrent. But of course, it starts with the education that they're doing in the fifth grade, and the dairy program, and that we're expanding into our upper grades, building that relationships. I think we've got the best SRO police staff that we can have right now, it's just getting better as the days go by. So, I'm real pleased with that. And outside of that, I'm gonna turn it over to Sheriff Weldon, but I want to thank the commission so much for the work you've done at some of our campuses at Geraldine. I think that the road department and Mr. Luther, an engineer at the commission, for helping us fund some projects at Geraldine and Collins, while still having a different place that we've never been. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to do some paving and some work. And that makes, so, it means so much to the community, so much to me, our students, and I don't think that's what. But I'll let Sheriff Weldon speak, and we'll with the rest of the safety stuff, and then, of course, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Barnett, Sheriff Weldon.
Good morning. Dr. Barnett kind of hit on about everything, and pulls right back to what he said, that we have one of the greatest working relationships between the board of education and the commission and sheriff's office, I think we could possibly have. And we put our youth first in everything that's done at the sheriff's office and in cooperation with the board of education. And Dr. Barnett's been fully supportive of our ideas. You know, we got out and raised money and purchased a canine just for the schools in the Cal County. And not just the schools in the Cal County, but also for Paint City schools of our youth and our future. You know, we're in positions to protect our youth, to move forward with our youth. So, we purchased a canine for the school, and just some of the small things we've done and worked together. As one, is we have an SRO on every single campus, and we also have a supervisor that rolls throughout the county. So, we have an additional SRO, basically, any given time moving throughout the county to help cover every single campus. But we went a little further, and we went to a first and end communication system. And so, it's set up in branches, like our school resource officer, or certain divisions within our office. And what we've done by that is this automatic communication within the school. If there's something happening in the school, we're not relying on trying to get information out to our radio, get to someone. We have direct connect to every, every single SRO, or every single respondent agency at one time. So, we can get to the friend quicker, there being a friend, we can get there quicker. But we definitely worked together and pushed this issue. We had our first at-risk camp this summer that was awesome. It was several days long in Camp Conville, we partnered with the Boy Scouts of America. And we had at-risk youth out there, certain teenagers from every school across the county. And that may not sound like a whole lot of school protection, but these are kids that potentially have a fork in their road, that are bad. So, we were able to put a one-on-one with the SROs and these youth before they started back to school. It may change the direction of the way they go throughout the rest of the school year. So, to me, that's a big vital part of protecting that group of children. But we may have talked about many things, and I feel like we have one of the safest programs. There is, right here in Cal County, there's the SRO program and the board of education. But like Dr. Barnett said, we couldn't do it without your help, and we couldn't do it without his help. But it's just good to see that we're all on the same page, working for the same reason. And I think we have going to save the school system without doubt, and Sheriff Weldon.
Thank you, Sheriff, we appreciate you all being here. I'm, I'm, Mr. Char, I know I've been involved in SRO program ever since its inception, a long time ago, when we have News Ministry, God, right? I was talking over weekend to Marshall County people, and, you know, they only have four SRO officers in the county. And I talk about how blessed we are to have what we've got here, Mr. Char, and I know your community with the dollars. And the funding, I believe, sir.
This SRO program actually started about nine, and here she got, Mr. Lamb, Mr. Lamb, who's a tenant, Sheriff Reed, and I guess Mr. Bale was just present at the commission at that time, and we got Grant to start that program now. And we had a, about thirteen full-time officers that he was paid a grant, federal grant. And that grant, after three years, went away. And so, the SRO program went away, down to a very, very minimal amount. And so, the two efforts of, of course, Dr. Barnett, and then Mr. Harrow, and others, and we have, we developed the program back to almost where it was at, and really, a little beyond where it was at. It did come about a cost, but it's a, it is a, it's about a $600,000 cost that shared between the commission and the board of education. There's no additional funding, there's no kind of grant money. But it's, it's through the efforts of both the board of education and the commission to carve out monies for that purpose for us. I had a meeting this past Friday with a lot of administrators from all over the state of Alabama. One of the topics we talked about was SROs. And so, I was just curious as to where, where they were at. And I talked to Jackson County, who has more schools than we have, and I think they have authority. And I, and then, I said Marshall County's got four, you know, I talked to one county, and then other counties. Some have some funding for it, they have some mechanisms for paying for it. And that was an effort that we made back many years ago to try to, try to get some evidence for it, but it didn't do it. But again, two efforts of just trying to, to create, to carve out monies for this purpose, I think. It says a lot for, for Dr. Barnett and Mr. Harrow for doing that. We can spend monies on other, in other areas, but, but they have looked at the safety of schoolchildren as a priority. And Sheriff Weldon has been right in there with it, and appreciate everything he's done, and he's been super, super dedicated. So, like I said, it's, it's something that, that it's taken a lot of effort to get to where we're at. And I'm sure we'll come further as we go along. Like, I, it depends, but I'd love to have extra money for that, because I know every county does, they don't put that. They don't put, put that priority in this area that we have, and so, appreciate you.
Thank you so much, Lieutenant. Again, we appreciate the work and friendship that we have through all of our offices. I want to ask one question, and I mean, y'all got a lot of things to do. If somebody around the school, just for instance, for example, should notice some abominable behavior from someone, that's, of course, that's just out of ordinary behavior, anger, some kind of hostility, or something like that, just what should, what should, what should one do in case like that? Sheriff, Dr. Barnett, both of you, maybe we'll speak to it.
On our campuses, any person, any personnel, any faculty or staff member has the ability and the authority to place the school on lockdown at any, at any time. If a person, a teacher, or a custodial staff, or CMB, if they see something that they believe could present a threat to that school, they have the authority to put the school on lockdown immediately. And of course, that means all door costs.
I didn't know that.
Secure the perimeter, whatever. We obviously communicate at that point, obviously, the admin, school-based administration, the SRO, they, they're immediately notified, and then, you know, obviously, how you handle it from there, depends on, you know, the severity of the threat, how, you know, when the SRO, the administrator can confront it individually, realize it may be nothing, it may, you know, whatever. So, you know, once you're able to evaluate the situation, that determines the county's next steps or how to do. But if we believe, you know, and all of our faculty and staff, they understand, if there's a situation that they have concern, we have apps on our phone that we can communicate in, and lockdown things, immediately, we have, we have protocols and procedures in place for such events.
Thank you very much. Sheriff, if you have anything to add?
Just, Dr. Barnett covered that well. That's part of our, our program with the first end communication. If it wasn't going lockdown, we automatically have someone inside as a direct connection to respond to school resource officers or law enforcement that can initialize where the threat is at by keeping our kids safe and lockdown, and keeping someone armed inside. Unfortunately, we live in the daytime, we can't be too careful whether it's at a school or anywhere else. And one more thing I'd like to add, Dr. Barnett was a big push in, is we came up with a program where we offered criminal justice training inside the school systems. And it's been just a phenomenal response from, from students, you know, twenty-five, twenty at school involved in it. And that was another way that not only were we educating our youth in the duties of law enforcement and criminal justice all itself, but what we're able to do is we're able to bring in outside law enforcement in schools from different divisions, teaching different laws, but also, and it's a two-edged sword, because we're able to put more of the law enforcement in our schools, because we're only teaching, it's only more protection, we're being able to add at zero cost.
Well, I want to hear these gentlemen, I appreciate it. We all wanted to come, but Mr. Woodton is actually the one that put the idea in our mind to have you all come. Mr. Woodton?
I just want to thank you all for what you do for our young people. You know, we, as a commission, you know, we're kind of in charge of the money in the county. And it was, I was involved heavily when we decided to put a, help put an SRO at every school. And, you know, we had to, we had to work around the budget, and we'd get old. We'd get a lot of calls about other things. I've never gotten one call saying, hey, will y'all spend money for the SRO at the school? But we knew it was important, and really, as elected officials, our number one priority is the safety of our residents, and especially our most vulnerable residents. And y'all have done a wonderful job, and I really appreciate y'all giving us the update on what's, yeah.
It went through, thank you, Woodton.
You know, it's a sad fact, the evil that exists in our communities today is so dynamic and unpredictable. And we have to take those steps, as difficult as they may be financially, or as cumbersome as they may be on our communities and our school systems, and the staff that supports those things. We have to take those, because as you mentioned, our youth are our future. They're the ones that we need to be teaching and guiding, so that they can make the right decisions. And then, eventually, we're in a position to provide the same service to our grandchildren and their children. So, you guys are doing an excellent job of that, and keep doing what you're doing, and headed in the right direction. And if this commission, as long as I'm a member of it, can, can be of assistance to you, let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and Cockedaw.
If you remember certainly correctly, if it doesn't, I'm sure I'll be correct. The emphasis for us, pushing hard for the SRO, really came from Columbine situation. And the leadership of Sheriff Mark Row, it was unanimous with that particular board of commissioners that we do whatever it took to find the funds, try to protect our children as best we could. It's a, and the school board is the same situation. And it's progressed over the years, and I feel much more comfortable now than I did then by far. But the risk is greater now than it was then, too. This is, this is one more step in a tunnel vigilance, if you want to be honest about it. Not just in our school systems, but in our public lives, and where we go, the places we go, the functions we attend, each and every single one of us must be vigilant to watch for things that look out of place. But if we're going to start someplace to try to take care of our future, it starts with our children and our school systems. And I do thank you for going that next step. And this will be just one of many next steps, I'm sure, to do what we can to protect our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Typho, and Black.
Yes, Ryan, a lot of times we are following, but in this case, it seems like we're leading in that area for the different counties. And I appreciate y'all coming up with the programs you have come up with, and hope that it will never be tested. I think, I think with what y'all come up with will be a deterrent where we probably will never receive testing. So, appreciate what y'all done.
Mr. Luther? I appreciate most of you, I spoke to Dr. Barnett before the meeting about his leadership on some precious issues. And Sheriff, you do a tremendous job, and you're so warm and kind, we appreciate you. I don't know what we would have done, potentially not got you, but God sent you to us, I firmly believe that. Thank you, both.
And I think, thank you, and you appreciate all the comments you've done. You see where our priorities lie, and I just want to thank you where it's in fact, and I'll, so evident, in this situation. It is my business to school, which that's where it begins. And we appreciate it so much, and thank you, thank you for kind of coming and visiting with us and making things that we all are trying to do, for bettering our school system, our children, all the community, thank you so much. Next item, brother partner, I think it's up there in the poll.
Brief update, don't have a lot of new things to update, young. We are working on a reclaiming project in District One. We have one road remaining on the original list to be reclaimed. We have a Holland Church, we're building the rope rails up on these roads, over the bed, and start haulers, and trees, base material, sometime next week, hopefully this week. That's really about all I have news for you, web update. I do have a couple of things I'll let you know about. We talked about trucks at the last meeting, I still have not ordered trucks. Having some trouble with the company and salesman this year. I don't know exactly what kind of trucks we're gonna end up with yet, so, but still working on that. I'm expecting a phone call at any time, and we'll hopefully give me the information I need to make the decision that I have to make as regarding what kind of trucks that we're gonna be purchasing for next year. It's, it's been tough, and hard to get any answers, any actions, so, don't really have anything sure to report to you at this time, but hopefully, I'm hoping to have trucks ordered at least by tomorrow afternoon.
Alright, thank you.
We talked also last week a little bit about some other equipment needs, and still in the process of getting some price quotes on that, but I'll hopefully have those for you, maybe the next week, we might talk about some equipment purchases at that point in time. Have one of you, yeah, sort of, I have one personnel matter I'd like to hire, Jacob Bowles, to be our contemporary worker at the local department.
Here, Mr. Bowles, question, question, uh, your most honorable question. For second, second, both second discussion, means very glad that you don't say aye, or both states reject, thank you.
If I have any questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
Just, just real quick, Mr. Bowles, I want to thank you and the crew for the work you've done at the District One. The reclaiming project that we're working on is something that we have actually budgeted and planned on for last year. We had a few, a federal grant project that went a little bit longer, and pushed us in late August, September, before we were going to be able to work on it. And as most everybody remembers, it started raining in September, middle September, and it didn't stop until May. This is what happened, and so, that's, that's what I put it on. So, the roads in that area, those roads got in pretty bad, such a shape for red, and we apologize for that. It's just a circumstance of the weather, but your crew, and District Crew, and District One are doing a really superb job. I've gotten a lot, a lot of calls and appreciation for what you are doing there, and so, just want to express our thanks for what you're doing.
Yep, one quick comment, and I am not the commissioner of District One, but I meet you fine sometimes. So, the people, the people generally don't say thank you for jobs that you've done. The folks in the area that travel, they're very appreciative, the war drums are up, the smoke signals have stopped. They were thrilled to have that open again, and on their behalf, I think the pretty important, so are you. Appreciate that.
I wasn't even gonna open that one.
They are much, they are much relieved, so.
Four more ones are open, that's wrong. Thank you, they appreciate it. Engineer, Mr. Lewis, do both your funding agreements.
Okay. So, these two funding agreements are for the Old Highway Thirty-five, Eight Thirty-five failure, and the damages on Canteroob Eighty-five from the flooding that we had back in February. Both of those roads, of course, Eight Thirty-five's been closed since then. Eighty-five was not closed, but we have some damage and some movement there. Both of those are major later roads, so they are not eligible for FEMA fund, but they are eligible for federal highway funds. The ER program, emergency repair program, allows us to utilize those funds for repairs. They are a ninety-ten split, so it's a little bit different than our normal federal aid funds. So, we are eligible for ninety percent of those funds. And based on the estimates that I have provided, the reports have been written, and both of these agreements have been prepared. These are the standard funding agreements that we typically did with Alloa for our normal federal aid type funds. So, it's the same kind of thing, same, same agreement, but the funding is laid out, just a little bit different. So, I would ask the commission to pass these resolutions, authorize it with Harrow and Mr. Char to execute these agreements.
Thank you. Any questions, attorney, excuse, written, if not, if you're most honorable question.
I have a motion.
Your second, both second discussion, means very glad that you don't say aye, or both states reject, and the rest associated with them. I have both you speaking in this resolution.
Mr. Cockedaw had asked me to take a look at Canteroob Eighty-five Three in his district, runs between Eight Twenty-two and Eight Fifty-two. Based on the, on the roadway, my recommendation would be to post that road at twenty miles an hour. And also, in District One, had a request from citizen that lives on the road to take a look at it. This is Canteroob One Twenty-six. Uh, this is Canaroo One Twenty-six, uh, will be the section from the Henninger city limits, uh, back down to State Road Forty. And, uh, would recommend that we post it at thirty-five miles an hour. So there are two separate resolutions for each of those, and request of, uh, commission to pass those.
Second, I'll put it as you did, which Woodman did, he saw that in question.
No, just a quick comment, uh, Eight Fifty-three is our road that's not running, very narrow, very hilly, big herd. A lot of families on the road with children, people were speeding, uh, traveling at rates that normal rational people wouldn't travel. This means nothing else, just advise them, uh, try to slow them down, and maybe they will, but it's, it's not going to hurt the traffic. So I had a recommendation to, uh, pass the resolution, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Sheriff. Woodman?
Uh, Mr. Bowen is very kind of asking me about this, and I agree, it's absolutely a good idea for that, uh, for that area and condition of roads. So I'm making one, we can set it in resolution.
I believe that ties on my most of you, second.
I was like, I was like, you know.
All right, thank you. In discussion. Any's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, thank you. Now both of you, yes.
I have two separate damage claims. I have one from a Sasha Harons, who had her windshield busted from a, uh, Bush Hogs, uh, slinging rock down in District Three. And then also have one from a Christie Hall, who, uh, supported the pit tree limb that was hanging out in Canaroo Twenty-seven. Uh, just below St. Anthony Gap, so that's in District Four. And I would recommend that this is the zone to the insurance company.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman. If you have most of the, with these two, Mr. Carr. Your second. Most of second in discussion. Any's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, thank you. Uh, resurfacing, uh, award, Mr. Woodman?
Back to the end of, uh, July, uh, state opened bids for our Canaroo One Sixteen resurfacing project. This is our, uh, this is a normal federal aid project that we typically do each year. This is in District Four. And, um, the apparent low bidder was Wiregrass Construction. And after the bid price and CNI charges were added, the total comes to one million, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents. And county's portion, the two hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. And as you, uh, as we usually have to, the state is asking us to concur in the award, uh, of the contract to Wiregrass. And so it would be my recommendation that we should concur in that.
Mr. Black, I believe this is your air.
Uh, yes, that, uh, road, and turning it into a collector, uh, I've had a lot of people talk with me about it. I appreciate you, uh, making motion that it is, uh.
Thank you. Have a motion to, uh, award the, the bid to Wiregrass, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Award bid to, uh, Wiregrass. Your second.
Second.
Motion second, in discussion. Many's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman. Sheriff's Office, they will both pay. Mr. Smith?
Good morning. I just got two things. The first would be the resignation of Sebastian Gonzalez, full-time corrections officer.
Okay. We have a resignation, in question concerning, uh, present cases in the name of Mr. Smith. If not, do your, your motion, the honor, to that resignation.
No, no.
Your second. That was the second in discussion. Any's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
And the second would be the termination of Captain Franklin, full-time corrections officer.
All right. In question concerning termination, if not, do your motion, the honor, to please. Your second. Motion second, in discussion. Any's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, thank you. So state it unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, SRO personnel, Greg.
I have a couple things. Uh, I'd like to transfer both cable, uh, from part-time SRO to full-time SRO. And, uh, Dr. Barnett, I think, has agreed the Lord is going to have a different say. And I've got two transfers in the government of those.
Go ahead.
I'd like to transfer Gary Bowlen from part-time Courthouse Security to the part-time SRO. And Thomas Underwood from part-time SRO to part-time Courthouse Security.
You hear the recommendation, I'm, Greg, in question concerning that? If not, do your motion, the honor, please.
No, no.
Your second. Motion second, in discussion. Many's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, thank you.
One more personnel thing, I'd like to, uh, accept the resignation of part-time Deputy Investigator, Hal Nash.
Here the, uh, resignation, uh, Mr. Nash, uh, any question concerning that? If not, then to your motion, we accept that resignation. Your second. Motion second, in discussion. Any's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, thank you, sir.
I have three trainings I'd like to give your approval. I'd like to request Investigator Scott Tarrant, uh, go to the LACC conference, August twenty-eighth through thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Greg. Any questions concerning the recommendation, the training personnel? If not, do your motion, the honor, to please.
Go ahead.
Your second. Motion second, in discussion. Many's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, thank you. Now you, the vehicle training.
I've got two more trainings. I was going to try to do that, uh, I'd like to request Chief Investigator David Davis attend, uh, ROCIC Fall Annual, Annual Conference, uh, it's a homicide conference in Little Rock, Arkansas, uh, September eighth through eleven.
Is that both of them?
Uh, one more.
Go ahead, man.
Uh, the other one is allow myself and Tyler Prudt to attend the ACCA conference. They have a lot of sheriff's training this year, um, and they, they had talked about in the Sheriff's Association, they, they would like representation from each department.
Very important. Uh, you hear the, uh, recommendations, any questions concerning that?
Will be approved, trained.
Your second. Motion second, in discussion. Many's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, thank you. Is that all the personnel?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, the, the vehicles, um, this is due to the, the drug task force, as it was, the not judicial, uh, certain drug task force disbanding. The Sheriff's Office is going to continue to work, you know, narcotics, as they have always done. What, what this is, are vehicles that belong to ADECA, uh, when they split, they have to be split evenly among the agencies that were involved. Uh, the following vehicles, uh, will transfer to the City of Fort Payne. DTF O three, it's two thousand twelve, Chevrolet Tahoe, DTF eleven and twelve, which are two thousand nine Ford F-one-fifties. And DTF nineteen, that's two thousand nine Dodge Caravan. Those will go to the City of Fort Payne. Got some that'll go to the DA's office, uh, which will still be under the commission umbrella, I believe, but it'll be a very different part. Uh, DTF O one, two thousand twelve, Chevrolet Tahoe, DTF one oh one, two thousand ten, Chevrolet Tahoe, DTF thirteen forty, two thousand thirteen, F-one-fifty, and DTF eighteen, two thousand eleven, Chevrolet Impala. And one vehicle, DTF twenty-nine, uh, C's vehicle, two thousand five BMW five thirty high, will be sold at auction, and the funds distributed among the three entities.
And, and all these vehicles are driven by those agencies.
Right.
Sheriff's Office has got some, Fort Payne has some, DA's office has some, so it's.
Right. Yeah, our guys, they're all the, the driving unit, continue to drive the vehicles they have, uh, these are just the ones that are going.
Most of these have a summon, most of these are bought, they're bought through the brand, maybe some C's vehicles too, possibly.
Thank you, Mr. Greg. Uh, is that all of the transfers?
That's it.
In question concerning transfer? If not, then to, uh, your motion that we, uh, transfer these vehicles to their appropriate places.
Go ahead.
Your second. Motion second, in discussion. Many's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Greg. Council on Aid Personnel, Mr. Buchanan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, we'd like to hire Judy Jones to replace Maria Garza at the Council Senior Center.
Is that the only one you have? Uh, you hear, Mr. Buchanan's recommendation, any discussion about that? If there is, then do your motion, the honor, please.
Go ahead.
Your second. Motion second, in discussion. Many's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, thank you.
Can I give a quick update?
Ma'am.
Can I give an update on programs real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Caregivers' support group is going to meet, uh, September fifth at ten AM. Our speakers are going to be from in-home care agencies, hospice, nursing homes, assisted living, and rehab facilities. They're going to answer questions about those types of care settings, and how you go about which one might be best for different people. Um, also, uh, we've already booked our prom for March twenty-sixth. Uh, we booked it for Willow Valley Red Center, and our band has been booked, and it's going to be still kicking. Um, and this year's is going to be a fifty theme, I'm sorry, fifties theme with piddle skirts and saddle shoes. Um, so we'll be advertising it more later. Uh, we've already got some people that are starting to prepare their, their outfit, or their wardrobe for this.
You can lift the curtain off them, to know how weird people wear.
Ah, you know, I, I don't.
Fifty, gentle, right?
I would, I would relay that to my activity coordinator that knows all the answers. But we're looking forward to having all of you come. And no, you do not have to dance, you can come and smile, listen to the music.
Dance, you already told me.
And then I have another reminder, um, we have Sacred Heart singing at our place, uh, and we're very blessed to have them come. They come, I believe, from March to October, so there's only a few months left if you want to enjoy it. I think we have two of you guys that come sometimes. No, you do, because you opened the door for me last year when we had prom. All my staff was at prom, and you opened the door for Sacred Heart singing. So we appreciate that. We booked prom on a Thursday, so it won't interfere. But we'd love to have people if they want to come, but it starts at six-thirty, and it's open to the public. Does that explain it?
That's good.
Okay. Have a good day.
Thank you. That's our performance, uh, we're in all of our counties, and all of, we require, serve, um, talking. And, uh, I served.
Matt, that's one of your favorites.
And since Mr.
No man will show them, Mr. Black, I'm a six. That's one of Matt's favorite agents, isn't that right?
Since.
Hurry up, hurry up, exactly.
Mister.
I like it.
Sir, Mr. Black is a junior member. He has the state representative being, the rest of the city on the carceral pole. And, uh, Mr. Black, uh, has retired, gets free going, and, 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 uh, of course, Mr. Buchanan, I haven't seen me on that. But it's important, and the fact of the matter is, they live so much far up, uh, with our, uh, with our senior centers from Black and Earl Bean. You haven't been down there and saw what they've done, uh, Mayor Abel's here, and he can explain to you. I mean, it's a beautiful silk house down there, grand opening, in, uh, different places. So, we appreciate also, uh, what Mr. Buchanan does. Now, just the other day, uh, we resigned all of our agreements here in the office. And, uh, Mr. Sharp and I, and that's with, uh, Director, Mr. Breland, I believe that's who it was, and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Buchanan was here. They were, uh, so very complimentary of, uh, the job that our people in Cap County do in our cities. So, uh, I just want to commend Mayor Abel, Mr. Buchanan, and all of you who are involved in that. Y'all do a great job, and it serves a great need for a lot of people. We appreciate the ongoing process of that, because it's, it's so important, and it gives, uh, uh, a lot of, a lot of people ways to, uh, exercise what else they have left, and so we, we appreciate them very much.
One quick comment, this is not a hardship to, uh, I've served, and quite frankly, enjoyed it. And the reason that I relinquished my position on board was that I was getting too old to drive back to my office at night, and I couldn't see. But, but the people, I mean, let's just be honest about it. But the people that you meet are real nice, they work real hard, and you can get a lot out of it, and they will gain a lot from your insights. So, thank you for accepting the position.
I know I had a motion, I don't believe I ever got second, we had a motion, but I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Second. I was very important position, and I, I didn't get a ticket to the carceral, so I, I particularly myself. So, anyway, uh, any discussion about that, many's favorite, they don't say aye. Anyone post a objection, thank you. As well, I appreciate you, just, um, and I, as much fact, though, I'm sure it would be a great asset for that vote. That concludes our agenda. Our next meeting will be August twenty-seventh, here in the chambers, but your motion, the honor, my turn. Being an eye, object, go.